Monday, March 7th, 2022, Gackel City Council started at 6:59. Did everyone have a chance to read all the minutes from the previous meeting? Any changes or corrections on that? Now we'll take a motion to approve them. Move to approve. Lauren, second?
I'll second.
Larry, all those in favor?
Aye.
The only thing for tonight's agenda, we're gonna add the water rate study that we had done a while ago that we gotta get moving on. Anything else that we wanna add? Taylor, I know I think we got what you needed. You guys got anything you wanna add? Okay. They take a motion to approve tonight's agenda then.
So moved.
Taylor?
I'll second.
Jeff, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, we'll go straight to more so you guys can get going here.
Okay. Michael Handel for agenda. First thing on the list was that change order. Just making an official list plan. Change order for those three blocks. Streets. So it comes out of being me and Luke working down with Price. And it's under thirty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight. So that's Fourth Avenue from front essentially to Maple Street over there. And then Birch over just like we talked about earlier. It's maps on the back, but everything that involves street work, no concrete work. Sure is.
I'm sorry, do you wanna say that one more time?
Yeah, so it's these three blocks.
Oh, you got it.
Yeah, three, three highlighted. So those three are about a hundred and thirty-three.
And this one on Birch is going all the way down to?
To the gravel.
To the gravel?
Yeah. Yeah, no, it's pretty narrow streets, no curb and gutter. Just a little, little dirt work.
Excellent. We were hoping we could get down to there because that's pretty bad already.
Yep.
Yeah, that's, I agree with that.
Excellent.
Full, full reconstruction. At the end, we might have one more. Depending on what we do for patching. This is, we don't wanna go any more than this right now. It's very uncomfortable getting to, but.
Yeah. So you need a motion to approve those three?
Yep.
Okay, we'll need a motion to approve change order number two.
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And then Tom just had something to refinance.
Yep, so, and what we're gonna do for, for engineering fees on this, we've got some budget left from our RPR budget from last year that I think will have enough to cover this stuff. And then also our construction administration budget for this. I think we should have enough in our budget from last year's project we were under that we should be under our fees still. We'll have a little bit of design in this. So I gotta see where we come out in. When we were giving you the estimates, we had engineering budget included in those. This hundred and thirty-three thousand doesn't have that in there. But I, I think we have enough left over from last year to cover most of that. For the end will be okay there. I'll see where it shakes out at the end, but.
Okay.
We, if we're over, I'm just giving our hourly rates of what it takes. So. SRF revolving loan fund. So last meeting we talked. So old loans you guys have, Public Finance contacted me about a month ago. They said their rates are lower. So in the past, I don't know if this is ten years ago or when it was, you guys refinanced all of your water sewer loans that you had. You refinanced them into one package. And that loan was through North Dakota Public Finance Authority. The rate was about, it's variable. What you have left is about 3.2%. So she called me, she said, if Gackel refinances through the SRF program, which is administered by North Dakota Public Finance, she had to look at your forms. If you qualify, you could drop from 3.2 down to 2%. So I took this stuff last meeting, sent it to her. She said, you do qualify, so we put you on the list to refinance. It's through the SRF program. The earliest you could do it would be June 1st. There's some paperwork we gotta do, it's not very much. There's a couple of questionnaires that we've sent in for that. The fees to do this, I don't know if you use Onsted, Onsted-Twitchell or Onsted-Stewart-Wagner. There's two bond counsel attorneys in North Dakota that do this work.
Onsted, the first one, the O.
Onsted-Twitchell. They charge twenty-five hundred bucks to do the refinancing. So it's a very.
One-time fee?
One-time fee. We'll have a few hours into putting applications together. But it's, it's real minimal. You're probably looking at thirty-five hundred bucks to do this refinancing, one-time fee. You've got eight hundred and thirty thousand left on this loan. And I think there's like sixteen years left on it. But it'll save you five grand a year to do this. So you'll save seventy, eighty thousand by doing this. So the real, real minimal, it's essentially, it's through the same program. So right now, your loan is through Public Finance Authority. This loan would be through the SRF, North Dakota DEQ SRF program, which is administered by Public Finance. So they get their money from Public Finance. So you're refinancing, it's essentially through the same program. And it saves you percent, percent and a half in, in interest. So we filled out the questionnaires. June 1st, you'll be on the list as soon as you can do it, it's June 1st. Once that, once that comes around, Cherry, you'll start getting some documents from, from Onsted-Twitchell. Most of it will be between you and them. Just you'll need some signatures. I think we've already given them their audits, so. It's a good deal for you. I mean, it's saved you seventy, eighty grand. So. But that's the update for that, you do qualify. So last month I didn't know if you did for sure or not. So.
Do you need a motion to refinance?
You, no, you did a motion last time. And then, once June comes around, there'll be a couple of resolutions. She'll probably make you, maybe attorney law send with to approve, but. So there's that. The other thing I wanted to talk about was you had some issues with your water tower pump house controls. I know you got a quote here from Sweeney. So you wanna brief us on what happened or how do you want us to?
Well, what?
Yeah.
What it is, we're sensing the pressure down in the, the wellhouse to kick the high service pumps in.
Yep.
The problem is, for one, we don't know the level of the tower. There's no way to know that. And we got all the users in between. Cause that line comes into James Owens' house and then it splits. So you've got a lot of users, so it's really somewhat erratic. We've had really a lot of trouble with trying to get it set. If we could sense the water pressure up here in the tower, like it used to be when we had the old copper telephone line. It more or less, when that level dropped to forty-eight pounds, it sent the signal down, told it to run. It would run till it hit fifty and shut off. And basically, and I'm not saying we gotta go to Sweeney, but I just talked to him because Streeter is doing virtually the same thing. When the tower tells the well to kick in, it sends a signal out wireless. It kicks the pump on. When the tower reaches, reaches the preset level, it shuts off. In the control panel at the tower, they have a, basically a screen. And it just tells the water level in the tower. So in the winter time, if you wanna lower it, you just, you know what that level is in that tower.
You said it would alert Bill too now, right? If something's.
They said if we could put a, where it would dial.
Yeah, auto dialer telemetry on here. So what my understanding is, no control panel here at the tower. You've got a panel down at the pump house. So you've got a pressure transducer down there. There's no pressure transducer here at the tower. So to improve the system, you're gonna add a pressure transducer here too. So he can read it down at the pump house. But like what you're saying is there's a lot to go through before it gets down to the pump house. So it's not as accurate when they're that far away. Having one here on the tower, you know exactly what the tower level is all the time. So Sweeney's proposal here, to do the work you're talking, Lauren, looks like it's about nine grand. One thing you might wanna ask them on this is this insight system. You probably want a screen on it here and at the pump house. Sometimes these insight systems don't have the screens. They're just, you just see it on your phone. So it's nice to have the LCD screen, you know, at least at the pump house. You wanna make sure that's included in here too. This proposal's ninety-one hundred bucks. It says it's not installed. So you're gonna need electric, an electrician to put it into. So you're probably another four or five grand. So you're about fifteen thousand probably is what it is for this. You know, maybe, maybe the screen, maybe you're into twenty, I'd say that's all done if you get the screens in there and stuff. What it does, what it does is it sends.
North Dakota Pumping Control.
Okay, you have another proposal? What, what's theirs?
Theirs is sixteen, five, thirty-six.
We got a pretty cheap electrician.
Yeah, he's brilliant.
These, these guys do.
And this is installed?
Okay. Is that the?
Yeah, it says install, all installed.
Two control panels too? Yeah. So they're, they're pretty.
I think that had the control panel. One.
This, this has the, it says the insight system, fiber box, wall mount. It doesn't say if there's the screen on there or not.
I think it wasn't here, it was just one.
That's just something to clarify. You'd want, you'd want it probably on both of them, so it's the same.
And these guys came home and, so we got the first quote to do it. They came home and they took pictures of our area up here and down there.
Okay.
So they kinda know what, which Sweeney, they can come home and take pictures of that.
Yeah, they're both good. I mean, I've worked in both of them before. I have the issues.
The other thing with, you know, Sweeney, they're more.
What do you say is accurate?
And there, there is one more thing, there's a monthly fee.
I'm sure for that dial-up.
Yeah.
Forty-five bucks a month, it says on here. But I don't think you need internet connection to get, and that includes, or that's, they're reading it off a cell phone or, I'm not sure how to do it, but you don't have to pay internet with that at all. So if you're, if you're gonna do something like this, and you talked to me about grant funding, something this small, there's, there's really not a lot of good grant opportunities to do, to do just this. Because by the time you go through the application process, the bidding process, if you give any federal dollars, you have to bid it. They have to have prevailing wages. Something small like this, the city's probably better off just hiring these guys to do it versus fill out a grant application. Now, if you're gonna do more stuff, if you're gonna do a generator, and we talked about that, if you're gonna do meters, you know, if you're gonna combine some of these things together, then there's, that's when you maybe wanna apply for grants.
Is that something we should be looking, I know we're looking at new meters too. We could just use more of them, the way it sounds.
I don't know how old your meter.
And that generator, when I talked to him, I had him throw that on there too. Because Lauren and I went down and did all that shit down for the Homeland Security Act.
Yep.
And it just didn't sound positive. So we just, I don't know, just so you guys have a heads up on that too.
You're looking at probably a fifty KW down there, you know, permanent standby. Probably propane is probably what you want, you don't have natural gas. Lots of cities put diesel in, but diesels are a lot more maintenance intensive on these, on these ones. The nice thing with the propane tank is you just set it and leave it. It fires up once a month or however often you set it. It's way less maintenance. Diesel have come a long ways, making two, center fifty-two. I think propane review.
This one is, it was thirty-two thousand, six hundred for a service rated transfer and. Shit, I'm missing a sheet.
How many?
It's a fifty KW.
Fifty KW.
Transfer and the, and the pump? The transfer pump or the?
Transfer and the generator. And this was a cooler from Interstate Power.
So we had talked to you.
And then Eggers.
Yeah, so I got a, I talked to our electrical engineer too. And he said about sixty is what he thought for gen sets, if you bid it. Now, if you're getting one for thirty, I don't know what the discrepancy there is, but. And he, he said probably about thirty on the controls. So he's a little high there too if you're at probably twenty, so.
Probably it's a cooler.
Like Eggers just picked up the linko line of generators.
Okay.
And they're good generators. I toured the plant several years back. And that one was about twenty-seven, five.
Okay.
And they load bank test them.
Automatic transfer switch.
Yep. Both of them were service rated. And what I mean by service rated, I, right at the pole, I could mount that transfer switch right at the pole. And that's my service point then.
Okay.
If you do a non-service rated, it gets a little more complicated. Cause now you've got your service point.
No control.
Like we got two services down there. We got one in the main wellhouse and one in that old wellhouse that we're actually not using, but we're heating it. But we have to heat it because the water comes through there.
If you're, if you're at fifty thousand, you know, CDVG is, is a lot of red tape for something like this. That's, those applications are due April 1st in Jamestown. You can get fifty, they want you to have some skin in the game. So if you've got a fifty thousand dollar project, they're gonna want you to pay for some of that usually. They don't like to give out the hundred percent grants. The county would be a good one to talk to about this. The Homeland Security stuff, I know a lot of people are asking for gen sets right now. If you go through CDVG, you have to bid it. You can't construct the project until next year. So it's, it's a lot of red tape for a, a smaller project like this. If you want, we can do the application for you. But it's, it's your guys' decision. It, it's more geared for if you're doing, you know, more things like the meters in there too. They like to give out a hundred thousand dollar grants, it seems like eighty to a hundred thousand. But if you're, if your project's only fifty thousand, it's tougher to get it.
And what percentage normally would be?
Seventy-five a lot of times. But if, if you're gonna bid it out, you need to get an electrical engineer to put the plans together to bid it. So he's got five, six thousand in costs, so that price will, will roll up. Seems like you have pretty good numbers there from Sweeney and Dakota Pump and from, I don't know who the gen set was from.
But one was Interstate Power and the other one is Eggers.
Okay. They seem pretty reasonable numbers, so.
For those panels, can we use our ARPA grant?
Yeah, you could.
Cause we do, I mean, if we held off on our meters, if you guys definitely needed that, we do have another twenty-two thousand come in from that.
And you should be able to do it, put it toward the gen set too, because it's, it's water related.
I mean, because we spent, we're spending this first twenty-two thousand on the meters.
When does that next twenty-two come in?
I'm thinking, when did we get the first one?
It should be mid, mid, midsummer this year.
Yeah, something like that. June, I think, June, July, something like that.
But you mentioned another source, there's a water.
So there's a state revolving loan fund. So that's, that's what you're refinancing your, all your old loans through. That's thirty years at two percent. So if you get on the list for that, the top couple of projects on that list get loan forgiveness. And they get seventy-five percent loan forgiveness. Now, they typically give about two million dollars a year in loan forgiveness. Next year, in December, in October, it looks like they're gonna get about ten million dollars in loan forgiveness for the next five years because of the infrastructure bills that passed. So maybe the way to handle this is maybe you do the telemetry with the ARPA stuff. And if you need to do meters too, maybe you do the gen set and the meters together and apply for SRF program or, or through CDVG. Maybe you combine some of those bigger ones and get on the list. Cause you, you need it now or do you have a little time to wait on some of this stuff?
We have time.
Sooner the better, I would think.
Or if you wanna apply, you could apply, the CDVG application, do April 1st. So if you wanted to put all of them in together, gen set, the meters, the telemetry stuff, get an application into CDVG, you know, maybe you're at two hundred thousand for all this stuff. Maybe they'll give you seventy-five or a hundred thousand. And maybe use some ARPA money on it. And maybe finance the rest through the SRF program at, at two percent. You know, that's an option too. And there was lots of different funding agencies out there and probably confusing things a little bit here, but. I guess I just don't know how soon you wanna go on what your.
No, I was under the assumption, I thought the ARPA, you cannot use that grant money with another grant project.
You can use it for other, other funding.
Oh, you can?
So I think no matter what route is over, you have to get a bid out, right?
Well, if, if you just, if you just hire Sweeney or Dakota Pump, that's, that's not a, a public bid. You just solicited for quotes is what you're doing for that.
Sure.
So through CDVG program, you have to do the advertising, the thirty days. You have to publicly bid it. And you have to go with the, the lowest bidder, as long as they're a qualified bidder, to fund some of those, to use that funding. Same with the SRF program.
Right.
So.
So depending on the big of a project we wanna do.
Yeah, these smaller, these smaller projects like this, I have to charge the engineering fees on, on things. And by the time you get the grant funding, it sometimes, it just doesn't make sense a lot of times for you to hire me to do this when you can get a, a quote directly from the supplier on some of these smaller projects like this. So.
You have one with like subway punch cards after you, you're wasting so much time.
I'm trying to see this. Don't hire me on some of the smaller. Just do it, do it yourself on.
I mean, I guess you just gotta figure out how much you have to do.
So either we spend twenty-five or we spend a hundred to spend twenty-five, otherwise.
You're gonna get a lot more done, obviously, if you go through the financing part. It's how much, how much does it even? How much should we need to do?
And we won't know on that generator, it sounded like, till, he didn't even know about November, did he? He doesn't sound too confident.
Lead times are so far out on things right now.
That's what he made it sound like.
Even meters are nine months, twelve months out. If you want, what we could do, we could package all three of them together, put in a CDVG application in April, and then just see what you get. Cause you could turn that money back if you decide not to go through with it.
I say do that.
We could ask for a hundred thousand and, and maybe you get a hundred thousand. And what you could do then is apply for SRF in the fall on the, the remaining hundred thousand or whatever that number ends up being. And maybe you'll get some loan forgiveness through that too. So we can put an application together for all three items if you want.
You know, I think actually what we should do is try CDVG and just see what happens. And we're not bound. I mean, through the fire hall, we can turn it back.
Yep.
Sounds like by then we'd know about the, we'd have the other twenty-two thousand in front, right in there.
Yeah.
Is that what, I mean, does that make sense?
Yeah, what, I think we'll, we can do the application for the, the telemetry stuff. You wanna do the generator too. And then what about the meters? Are you looking for, what are you putting, I-rolls in?
Neptunes?
Neptunes? Okay. Is it the whole town needs them or?
Well, we got a list of twenty of them. We have twenty new meters out there.
Okay.
Haven't installed them yet.
So we got two hundred and twenty left to now.
Okay, so you got, you need two hundred and twenty new neptunes is what you need. And who's installing them? Are you guys installing them? Cause that plays into the, okay, you'd install. What are you doing for a reading system? Do you have that yet or?
Yeah, we have all, we have all the equipment to read it, it's all radio readout.
Okay.
And then they'll come down program right into my computer.
Perfect. You have the meters or the software for it then too, or do you have to pay for that stuff?
He's merging it right into my UV Pro.
Okay.
But those are, we're obviously not gonna ask for all two hundred of them right now.
No.
Thousand apiece, weren't they?
No.
No, that's right, we thought they should.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, they were way less. Yeah. You should have bought, you should have bought five thousand of them.
So two hundred meters or two-twenty, sorry. What did you, what did you need, two-twenty more?
Well, are we gonna replace the ones that, you know, these new census ones do? I mean, they're not that old of meters that we have out there.
How many out there you think about?
Do you know, Cherry, how many census?
I would guess maybe thirty.
So we had a hundred and say fifty of them. That feels pretty close.
Right. Seventy towns.
With the twenty we got left or have already.
Yeah, so if you're at seventy then, if you're at thirty with a gen set and twenty with the.
I would say just, I guess, figure out around a hundred. I mean, hundred dollars, but that's kind of the number it sounds like we wanna hit for sure.
Yeah.
So we'll easily be there if we do all that.
So you wanna be a little bit above that for your estimate?
Cause we'd be right above that.
So then you ask for a hundred thousand, that's the, they, they like to give eighty to a hundred, it seems like, so.
So what are our project to be, a hundred and forty?
Yeah.
Probably. Which doesn't seem like we're too far.
But then we could back off the.
You could back, yeah, you, you, then you, you get the money, then you design exactly what you want.
Perfect.
And then you bid, publicly bid it, and you get your numbers. And then you use the CDVG money to cost share what you get. And then if you want, and you have some ARPA money, and if you want the remaining fifty thousand, you could apply for the SRF program for that. And that's thirty-year loan at two percent, or you could do a twenty-year loan at two percent. You probably wanna do a twenty because the meters want the last twenty. So. And they might have some loan forgiveness money for you too.
Well, we'll take a motion for that then. It don't matter.
Yeah, great.
I'll make that motion.
Lauren, second?
Second.
Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
And I think you hear around June.
Yes, that's perfect. I appreciate you doing that. I know it's kind of short notice, I just called Wednesday, I think you're listening.
Like when we got up here before the committee, do you guys do that?
That, so that changes now. So there was a big, um, kind of turnover in, in CDVG. What they were doing before was each region was ranking the projects. And then they charged an administration fee to administer the construction through CDVG. That mon, all their money comes from HUD. HUD saw that as a conflict of interest that the regions were ranking the projects and then billing the cities to administer the projects. So now all of these applications are going into the state. This will be new this year. And the state picks the projects and then the regions are gonna administer them. So we don't know how that's, if it's gonna be harder for communities, if they're gonna, if they're gonna fund bigger projects, if they're gonna fund smaller projects, or, or how that's gonna change. But there's a, a big audit that went on with HUD if they were happy about how they were doing things, so. You fill the application out, get submitted and just see where it goes. If you don't get it, you don't get it, and then you're back to where you started, but at least you tried, so. It's just, everything is, the lead times are crazy right now. Nine to twelve months on meters anyway. I don't know what gen sets are, what they, if they said how long the lead time is. Even gate valves right now are sixteen to seventeen weeks out. So.
All they told me was prices.
Yeah.
And like Waco, I guess, is doing monthly. They'll only quote on a monthly base. And then I guess freight. He just, the interstate guy just told me, it used to like, and they would, they would get like fifty thousand pounds on a load. And they would divide the freight rate by the poundage of the generators.
Sure.
Cause they probably a hundred and fifty KW and fifty KW. But he says right now, they just had one come in. Normally it would probably be a thousand bucks. It was like four thousand dollars freight alone.
Yep.
And I don't know what size, it probably was a pretty good sized gen, but.
Yeah, supply, supply chains are, are nuts right now. You guys probably, I'm sure you guys know that too, but it's just such a, it's a volatile market. You don't know what you can get. Suppliers, a lot of times they would, they'd quote our projects, contractors would bid on it and they'd hold their price for thirty days so the city can get it awarded. Now these suppliers are holding their price for a week. So it's, it's a difficult time to bid anything right now, but.
There should be a lot of trucks coming back from the DC area, so we should. All right, anything else for these guys? Anything else for us?
Nope.
All right. Appreciate you guys coming down.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be in touch on, on border states schedule too once we're here.
Okay. Sounds good, guys. Thank you, guys. Bill, what do you got for us?
Well, we talked about the power pump control there. Did everybody kinda see that? Make the work there. Um, how do we do that water passage? What was it? It's twenty-five thousand gallons. Different from last year.
Is that right, Harry?
Yep. Well, it's, it's about ten thousand difference. It usually runs about fifteen thousand. This year it was twenty thousand, twenty-five thousand.
I know we had a couple of times, um, the valve down there on rural water side wasn't shutting off, so then it would overflow the new tank. And they look like they credited us, credited us some gallons usage there. Um, we had that water break at Sorbex. That was, that was quite a bit there. At the park, you know, they got the water dead side hill and stuff.
Yep.
Like to see that gas would, and hold that dirt in. Ice skating rink was, tried filling that twice. Didn't work.
Um, there's a question that was brought up to me. With all the water you said apart, are you gonna still continue to, to foot that bill, or what is your guys' thoughts on that? Cause that's, that's quite a bit of their loss, I know that with.
Well, I took.
Well, I mean, watering the grass, I, I know, and the skating rink was quite a bit, cause you filled it twice, right? Or tried, I should say.
I asked them if they're gonna put, put a liner in there or something, but obviously it didn't work. Why? Well, this year they got that big project down there, you know, we're doing that. They're tearing that all out.
Think the water go down significantly once they get everything ready.
And I don't know if they're, they're putting in a liner, Lauren, or if they're just doing claywork down there.
I don't know.
For their base.
He seems awful secretive about what he really plans on doing. It scares me.
Yeah, and I think we should get with the park board and see what's.
That capita contractor. He's the guy that did that first time and made a mess.
Chris, yeah?
Huh?
Chris, yeah?
Chris Anderson. I talked to Wishick. They have a skating rink, and I never went down to see it, which I should just go down there. They use a silage tarp. And in the summertime, it's a tennis court. In the wintertime, they use two by tens somehow, and they just put a silage tarp down.
So if you fold it up, right?
Huh?
If you fold it, you know, if you fold that tarp around the two by ten.
Yeah, and then they just fill that.
If that's all.
Then I suppose it's only inch and a half deep, or?
No, you would just fill them layers. That's the biggest thing, like, the guys I talked to, what they do their own rinks, is you gotta fill it in really thin layers. So, about an inch or less and then freeze. About an inch or less then freeze. Then you don't get the heaves and the ice. It'll also seal up the ground if there's a spot that isn't, that the water's seeping away, well, that'll get wet and freeze. And then every time you flood, it'll just seal up a little bit.
That makes sense.
Which is what I tried to tell them guys that one time, but.
I mean, I took the tanker down there the first time and emptied it out. I just took the nozzle and it was kinda.
Well, I, I think you do need some sort of a liner in there. It's really not your fault.
No, I know, I mean.
Yeah.
I think you should pay for something, just build.
Yeah, we've, we've, we'll ask the park board what the plans are for liner and stuff, but I, I understand your question. I mean, if they wanna try to get something working.
Well, I know another meeting, another meeting that park board did say that, asking, that they did this project, if we'd be willing to help pay for the water.
Maybe if we should have, after they get through with their, getting their new members, we should ask them what the future intentions are, cause if they're gonna have a bunch more, I'm, I'm not saying we don't wanna help all, obviously, but figure out what we're gonna.
It could be a cost share, and to, doesn't have to be a hundred percent donation, but.
Right. I just, so you guys are aware, cause that was quite a few gallons of, I understood, but the city eating this year from a lot of different things.
Well, as far as watering that side hill, I would guess that's gonna slow down.
Right, yeah.
Trying to get the grass to stay at least.
Yeah, looks good, I just.
City pool is a thousand gallons a day.
Two months, I'm not gonna worry about.
Alright, anything else, Bill?
Um, I have a guy from Team Lab. That's where I get a lot of my enzymes and enzyme blocks from and stuff like that for the lagoon system out there. They bought a new, or his boss bought a drone boat. And they can, they're trying, what they're trying to do is get a lot of these small towns together so that it'd be worth for them to come out and test our lagoons.
So you, you want an RC boat, is what you're saying?
Yeah. It's, it's five hundred bucks for them to come out and, and do it. And it's a hundred and fifty dollars for the tip, or the sludge test. The hundred and fifty dollars, if we have to do anything as far as chemical wise to our lagoon, as far as how much sludge is down there, um, he will credit back that hundred and fifty dollars towards whatever we need to get our lagoons back to normal. Um, this is just a sample of what that drone does. And what it does, it'll just send signals throughout the whole lagoon, and we'll, they'll tell, be able to tell where our bad spots are at in certain parts of built up sludge.
And they want a hundred and fifty dollars to inspect it?
It's five hundred for that amount, and then that, and then another hundred and fifty on that sludge. And then that sludge test isn't, it'll tell you what's organic sludge and what's inorganic sludge and, you know, instead of treating the whole pond, you would just be treating that section where it's, you know, where the sludge is built up at. Cause I wouldn't have a clue right now where, where it's at.
I know that stuff's expensive, that chemical. Why don't we get the kayak and a bunch of mason jars?
I could do that too.
Scuba diving.
Who's gonna follow in now?
As long as it's your kayak.
So is this something we need to do for the state then too?
Nope.
This is just something if the state wants.
Wine from a waste, face a jar.
You're making a lot of money.
The way I look at it, well, I mean, um, for the price of that chemicals, I know, I know what it costs, this stuff, and it's very expensive. Hundreds, if not thousands of dollars for that chemical. If we could figure out where the worst spots are at, that'd be treating the whole damn thing. I, I wouldn't expect about that bucks.
And if it's not that bad, we can start treating it now versus five, six years from now, which is really bad. We'd be spending a lot more money than get it treated.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't even know if we have a problem. But it would be a piece of money. If we can get control of it, then, then we can save some money.
Yeah. But it's something that you guys want me to.
Well, I have a question. You want to make a motion?
I make a motion.
Second on that? Second, all of us in favor?
Aye.
Does that tell the depths and everything? Yeah, we're gonna get all that this summer. Boat is like right there. That's right. At least he's got a boat. At least a boat wouldn't get it. You got a little hole. Wouldn't get away on you. So that's, anything else, Bill?
Um, the backflow prevention stuff, I got, hopefully I got all the paperwork submitted. I didn't email, but I didn't submit all of it, so I got the rest of it done today. And then I talked to Todd over in Napoleon about their ordinance. And he's not exactly sure what they're going to do yet either, for the ordinance. But he more or less said that they have, right now, they have just adopted that whole.
That's more of a, a state issue. I mean, we don't need ordinance to cover that.
The backflow stuff we do.
Yeah. We, we, I mean, part of that, who's requiring us to put it in?
The state.
The state. But we have to also put the bill for, well, right, right now, we're not, right now, I have, just have to get the paperwork in before here goes first. For now, they're not really.
They'd be the ones finding people, not us, but.
Right. But it's in our distribution system.
Oh, okay.
As long as we're moving forward, we're okay for, what did he say, the first year or two?
Oh, I see.
They just wanna see that we're gonna be coming.
Then residents.
That, that makes sense.
And I called the guy that's overseeing a lot of this stuff today. Like the Miller honey houses, we don't have to do nothing with, um.
Departments we do?
Departments we do.
Ally was a big one, he said.
Ally would be one.
Okay.
Probably chemical.
Sure.
Like, the bank, probably not, it's just because it's just the bathroom. They don't,
Right.
They really don't do much there.
Woods or. Hair center probably does, but they.
I have a lot of hair centers. Bar would have to have one.
Alright.
I got a list of them.
I just kind of, that if a state was mandating that, that they would have to.
They're pushing it.
So does the state, do we have to adopt this thing, this ordinance?
No, not yet. Right now, it's just me getting the paperwork in, and as long as we're showing progress in this, it's.
I can understand that. It's being compliant, going through it, being compliant, not hurting anything.
Well, this one, it's been, it's been in for years and years and years since, like the seventies, but nobody's ever bothered with it until now. They're starting to get the, the bigger cities, they may do it. But it's all these smaller ones, sure, then.
At this point, it's just commercial, but we're suspecting it's gonna go residential in the future? Is that an accurate statement?
I can't say it's like, can't mention no or something.
Right.
So right now, they're just doing our city buildings, huh?
No, he even said in here, we wouldn't actually have to have one in here, cause I told him that all that we have is in here is a bathroom and a sink. He said there's, we shouldn't have to have one in here, but we can put one in here for you to.
Well, whatever it takes to be compliant.
You know, the only thing when reading through that ordinance, I wonder if a guy should just require like a new building, a new structure, that they put it in right off the bat. You know, including residential, say a new house.
Yeah, well, we could make it like.
Yeah, I don't think there's nothing in there about that, but.
You can make it mandatory for new, and then.
Yeah.
Well, there we just have to update a permit. Yeah. Ordinance, right? Or whatever ordinance for that is, for building. Okay.
And then I got an issue with, uh, the lift station off of Miller Honey. For some reason, the floats, either the floats are not kicking the pumps on, or there's something internally wrong with that main board in that.
Again?
System. So I, every day I check it to see if that, cause if, if it's a high level, the lights start flashing on top. And then I just switch the pumps over to handle, or pump it down.
Okay.
I got the code of pumping control there. As soon as they're back in the area, they'll come look at it, so.
You know what we could do in the meantime, and I was, was gonna tell you that. I'll go down, I can call them, or I could just walk through the diagram first. See if we can pinpoint it. And, um, if not, then just call them, and they could walk me through it. I'd take all these readings. Cause I'm afraid, there's a little circuit board in there. And I'm afraid of that circuit board.
Didn't that fail out to your own bill?
Was that the pump side, where they came in and replaced all that stuff in there?
Uh, the pumps were bad. Well, that one pump was bad, and the other one was down very good shape, so.
I can't imagine that being cheap, yeah.
Well, keep us informed, I guess.
Yeah.
If no, yeah.
Anything else?
I think that should be it.
Auditor?
Only thing I know is by, by March eleventh, we had to put in our local newspaper for election. This year, we have the mayor for four terms, the judge for four year term, two city councilmen for four year term, one city councilman for an unexpired two year term, and two park, park board members for four years, terms. So anybody that's going to re-up, I will have to have your paperwork for you if you wanna rewrite. But it had to be in the paper one month before we have to turn it into Napoleon. So I ha, I have to come out of Wednesday.
Okay.
That's it, Alex.
Anything else?
Cause you're taking mayorship again, aren't you?
I can run.
You're in.
I think there's a lot of people that wanna get their hat and ring in there. I think there's a lot of people that really want that job. Better get your buttons, man.
I'm good.
Check my chances.
You got anything for water service leasing?
No.
Jeff, you got anything? Uh, Larry? Lauren?
Nope. Uh, there's one light on main. Uh, the one that front, I think it's where the theater used to be, that goes on and off.
The one right down the four corners there? Or the theater? Well, the theater's got its own one. I, I see, okay.
Yeah.
It's right in that open spot now?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll call Steve tomorrow.
Would you wanna check on your angle two? I think there's one, I can't remember which side it's school, when I was pushing snow earlier one morning, it was really dark.
Yeah, I'll, I'll.
I can't remember which side it was, and maybe it was just fluke thing, but.
I'll, I'll see.
Okay.
And talking about that, there was a lady that called from the DOT, and she said they might have funding for infractions for the state highway for new lighting. So she asked me if we had been replacing any?
No, cause that's gonna cost, we went through that.
Well, no, they, they're.
Two years ago.
Oh, okay, cause she asked if they had been replacing them with the LED.
They have been.
And I said, when we have like to go out, they come out, and that's when they replace.
They've been replacing.
But it wasn't nothing fancy. They were, it's state highway, but it was something we had to do.
I think.
Oh, okay.
Your state highway doing.
Cause wasn't that some grant we were, they wanted us to do for re-up and perhaps some.
We didn't, why?
Yeah, okay, so that's separate, sorry about that.
It was flower planters and changing the light standards.
It was like sixty-fourty, was it, too, wasn't it?
Light stand, it was fancy with the decorative.
They only covered like sixty percent of it, didn't it? Okay, so, Lauren, you're good then?
Yep.
Okay, uh, we talked about the backflow prevention. Um, only garbage truck rental, we got that covered. Okay. You weren't here for that meeting, were you?
No, but I just see the bill.
Okay, perfect. You're okay with that?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, we got, uh, Texas Holdover raffle done, Archie Raffle, three nine seven raffle. Jerry, it does print out there? Okay. Will you have it done? You think by the whole term?
Did you send a date for the whole term?
March twelfth, whatever Saturday it is.
Probably not, then.
Oh, yeah, cause it's already the seventh. Yeah, you're screwed. Okay. Just checking. No, I was, I was checking. Or you, if, I can do something, do let me. Uh, transfer land to fire district. How's that going?
Oh, that's done. That's recorded. I don't know, is everybody aware of what happened? The fighter, through the assessment, it showed up that actually the, the lot twelve, which is the very north twenty-five feet of the fire hall, was actually owned by the city, not by the fire district. When that mistake or that oversight was noticed, um, I don't know, somebody at the courthouse recommended that the fire district owned that hole. So we transferred it over and.
And they paid the street assessments on it. We didn't.
Pardon?
They got, they inherited that street assessment, all the bills from that, and they paid the, the fire district.
Okay, good deal. Thanks for doing that, Lauren. Uh, Sweeney, pressure control, I think that's what we went over too, right, Bill?
Yep.
Extra payments for bond company. Got that done. Okay, so no business. More was already here. We just need, I forgot to bring something up. I didn't know we needed a motion, but for a moor for the city, that didn't cost the city anything. Um, if I can get a motion for that.
So move.
Lauren?
Second.
Taylor, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Water bill for southeast water users.
Where are you?
Oh, Richard. Okay, that was correctly.
Yeah, Richard.
Okay, sorry. And then Taylor's got speed limit sign outside of town that he was approached about.
So I don't know if there's a problem with, um, I don't know, people coming to town too fast outside of town. I was approached by, uh, someone who asked about, I don't know, if there's like, they wish it can layer.
I noticed, after you pointed that out, there isn't.
You know, but they, but he, what he was thinking is, you know, the ones that light up, when they're coming in and.
He wants to radar.
They radar you and see if, he didn't know if it was the state that covered it, or city covers it. I said, I don't know.
Cause it's a state highway.
It is a state highway, but it's city limits.
You might know, cause when I was going through Valley City and Fargo, it actually says the sheriff department, or the county, whatever county they're in, sheriff's department.
Do you have mobile ones?
No, we don't have anything like that. Where is it at? I mean, we could just go sit there.
That's right. Just coming into town.
Well, you know the stretch. If it's, it's gonna cost the city money, I mean, I'm sure it is, I'm sure it is a reminder if you're pulling in, like I. E come in there sometimes too, where it's just a few hours, a few attention, but it's close to twenty-five for, it feels like two miles, three days.
So I'm coming north on four or six in the town?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can sit there most of the week.
See, it's so many people you catch and then go from there.
Just on a street or feet truck, cause sometimes, sometimes I miss downshift.
Well, yeah, I just see what it, and I don't know what gets the thing.
But you could also go for uh for the bar, for their gaming money to pay for something like that.
Something.
Cause I wonder what the cost would be, does anybody have any idea?
I mean, you could ask for that.
Where does one go to look for something like that per se?
We could probably try and look something up like that and just be some type of special sign that solar powered. Usually they have those two little ropes or whatever, they go across the street and then. Basically measures the amount of time it takes for you to hit both ropes, and that's how it's received. There's some fancier ones that actually emit radar, but it just depends on what you guys try to set.
Well, that's your job to find out what the two difference from the two.
I think you'd be better off, cause I mean, I've been doing a lot of on highway thirty, I haven't had anyone speed there in like a week.
Okay.
I mean, and then over on highway three, I was, where you can have it over there, and I haven't had anyone speed over there for a while now.
That's the thing, it's like, how big a problem it is, and I don't really know much, like I might as well sit there, but. I sit at my house and watch people drive by that street, I'm like, slow down! Why are people driving so fast? And everyone would be like, I know, I just caught that person, they're doing twenty-five, I'm like, yeah.
I live on an intersection and I say, driving too fast on the intersection.
Drive it like ten mile an hour through town. But yeah, if you wanna do that, we'll just be in touch, see what you come up with, see what your findings are.
This particular one is coming from the south. This is what they're complaining about, yeah.
Yeah.
Or coming from the, coming from the north heading south.
I I never looked, but I don't think there's even a reduced speed sign.
No, there's no sign of any kind posted or anything coming this way, but obviously coming.
Well, there's a forty-five.
Coming from no, I'm talking right off, right off, right off forty-six. Yeah, there's, there's a forty-five and a twenty.
There, there's forty, there's a forty-five and a twenty-five?
Yeah, and then.
So you want it west of town or south of town?
South though.
That's south of town.
Well, the forty-five one, they moved. After they got that road done out there, they moved it far to south.
Keep that in mind.
Cause then you, cause where does the twenty-five start?
It's almost ridiculous.
Red fire bells on all.
Not quite that far. It's in between Millers and Ordeles, right, about halfway. But he really, I mean.
It takes a long time to get to town when you're still.
So can the council move those signs where we think fit? That's why I need patrol it.
Right in front of my draft.
Like the church.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder who does establish where that sign is gonna be, even right now. Does the state do that?
It's probably through DOT. You probably have to contact DOT and see. Because they have to have like certain distances in between signage in order to actually be able to post it correctly. So if they had like the forty-five and then like fifty feet later, the twenty-five, there's no way.
James panel, that that fifty is just, what the heck?
Okay. But you wanna tell them, you have those that.
Why do you die?
Yeah, that.
We see a lot of them in South Dakota.
Dawson has one.
It is Dawson.
On highway three there, yeah.
I mean, it does make you pay attention, like like look, see that sign flash and.
Yeah.
But I don't think we need to spend five thousand dollars on Stephen and Sadie, her wonderful deputies to.
They do this pay me.
Somewhere in here we do.
All right, uh good on that, guys?
Yep.
And then we also wanted to go over the water rate study that we had in, that we need to get moving on. And Lauren, you know more about that, don't you?
Yeah, those are gentlemen, I don't know who it was done by. I'm gonna do it. Anyway, they did a rate study. And do you remember Sherry, I've got the wastewater and I've got the the water. Did he do a garbage one, I thought, but I don't know.
No, he didn't do garbage. He just did wastewater and. Yeah, I've got here wastewater and water rate study.
And what they, one of the things they look at is the uh. The collection versus the debt ratio, and we're low. And uh his recommendation was. Like a fifty cent charge for a thousand gallons of water would generate about sixty-five hundred bucks additional revenue. You know, we haven't raised those rates since what, two thousand eleven?
I wouldn't.
I think we actually reduced them once, five bucks a month, wasn't it?
We took away that infrastructure, that was ten, and we moved it down to five.
He said if you had left that, it would've been okay.
The other thing is, even like the garbage now, you're looking at, what, four dollar fuel?
Yeah. Four percent.
Depends on where you're going.
Things going up.
You know, my, my personal feeling is we'd be better off raising a little at a time, trying to keep up with inflationary costs.
Our garbage is, we're the, I've called like six or seven places, we are so low on garbage.
I said that last year already, that's.
I thought we raised.
No, we didn't make it, you're mine.
Oh, we're here for.
No, we didn't raise anything. I, we're waiting to see what you say. We're waiting for this rate to start to become anything.
Oh, that's right, mhm, that is.
I remember I called, I can't remember what it was, but I called Todd Knowles, and I can't remember what he told me. I mean, that was last year already, but. We're, just compared to Napoleon, we're.
Well, like, most are anywhere from fourteen to nineteen dollars.
Yeah.
That were less than, like more lower?
What their bill was, their, their water, their trash was anywhere from fourteen to nineteen dollars for your trash, or a ten.
And everything from that to water and everything, we're cheapest, cheapest phase.
That's pretty bad, cause that seems like all we've been doing is raising, but we haven't, we've just been talking.
No, we've just been talking.
You were waiting for this rate study to come in and then try to figure out what's your way to do it.
Want to just make our decision on that?
Well, we better soon, cause.
So you called a bunch of people?
We also have to start collecting.
Trash, we are so.
What kind of?
What were the averages?
About, I I would say anywhere, well, they were anywhere from fourteen to nineteen, but most of them are going towards nineteen bucks, you know, eighteen, nineteen.
And we're ten? And they average ten, fourteen and nineteen?
So is that validating that the, that the minimum of what we were talking is twenty and. And we made it go under thirty dollars per month on the infrastructure cover, some of that, what you're saying in that?
Cause what was it? We.
We gotta be careful.
We're supposed to designate. We gotta, just do a infrastructure fee.
Well, I know, but we have the option to put it towards water sewer garbage, from what I understand, it's just one of those, it has to be incorporated in. Wonder.
We gotta pretty much say, this is what we want. Like, we've gotta raise water, that's.
It can't be just left in the air for whatever you want.
So we gotta do it individually to get.
But we do have the opportunity, I can't remember the percentage of it. At the end of the year, you can transfer so much percent into the general fund, so say we need something, we're done with the. Garbage truck and we don't have enough in that account.
So we just gotta figure out, we'll come up with some number of water at this point.
What was our, did you ask, well, like the average of water usage, what their price was in the area?
You know, the average house, household of two is right around that three thousand to four thousand gallons. So if we raised that, say fifty cents per thousand, it would be a lot, dollar to two dollars a household. He did say, and I thought it was in here, like the large users, users. Probably not increasing them, but to me, that makes a very muddy issue. Where do you draw the line to from a large user to the small user?
He said we'd be really in trouble with water. Water's doing okay, but I mean, it's, you need to go up, but if we lost DJ Batenbar, we'd be in trouble. Cause they use a lot of water.
I use a lot, I got a lot of girls.
I know.
So.
So is that enough? Cause he said how much we should roughly raise per household, then was it like a dollar or something?
A dollar, which one do you have there? Do you have the both the same, huh?
So we just take the rate up, is what we're gonna do?
You have the both the same way.
I think that's fair, because.
Then make it easier, then it covers everything.
We don't have that debate, do we? A thousand gallons used is ten, why am I paying as much as them?
Yeah, it's not necessary.
I think it's per bait, I would say.
Fifty cents a thousand is what we were saying?
Yeah, like if you say fifty cents a thousand, cause he's talking about a dollar.
That's, that's fair. That's, average person's two dollars a month.
Yeah. And the thing is, I think we're paying what, three seventy-five? Per thousand to Sust or Dickie Earl?
And I think they're going up too. They're even go up.
We're charging four, so we're getting twenty-five cents a thousand. And if we're using or pumping twenty-five thousand gallons a day. You know, we're only getting, what, six dollars? Not a lot of money. I mean, when I was reading those meters, I looked at that and I thought to myself, my god, our electric bill, it's not quite that high, but that doesn't allow.
Yeah.
For the maintenance on the pumps, the tower.
It's fifty cents enough.
So what would it take for us to just make a motion to take that up fifty seventy-five cents a thousand?
You don't know what they're raising, though? You just heard?
No, I just, I just heard that they may be raised, they're gonna be raising sometime soon.
Do we have to have a reading for that? To raise the rates?
That I don't know.
We could do it. We could do it too, I mean.
Well, we have right here, we have a, oh, do we have to a reading? Oh, you mean.
The reading, so we've gotta go through three readings.
Oh, I don't know. Should I call, leave a city on that?
I got it written down.
Probably, but I, I think we should go like a dollar a thousand increase.
Okay.
No, fifty cents a thousand increase on the water.
So we're upping it fifty cent more?
Well, let's do a motion that we were done there, and if we need a reading, we can go from there.
So I make a motion to.
And then uh should we increase the, the sewer rate?
Oh, should we get, so Jeff Hyer motion to raise fifty cents?
The sewer said too, I think he.
We'll talk about sewer in just a second.
Okay.
We need a second for that, then?
Jeff Hyer?
Second, Larry?
Now, the sewer is what?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good.
Nope.
You're good.
I think on the sewer, he recommended, what was it, two dollars and thirty cent?
Per month?
Well, we're for at, if we're at, what, five, we said? No, what do we have per?
The sewer is at thirty-five. So if it went to thirty-seven, fifty, thirty. The ones that are forty would be forty-two, thirty, and the ones that are fifty would be fifty-two, thirty. That gives us, it says, if you look on that one sheet all the way to the bottom, for the debt ratio one point one, the city will need to produce. Ninety, ninety-six thousand seven hundred in revenue. So we would need to up it two thousand, two dollars and thirty cent to make what we need to be another.
So you wanna take it two fifty?
Per month?
That's total per person per month.
And is it as simple as two dollars and fifty cent increase in garbage fees for? This all guys gotta do?
Yeah, at least it gets designated to that.
We're still lower than anybody. Oh, a hundred percent.
Okay, do we wanna get a separate thing for the sewer? We want it for more?
What do you guys want for the sewer then? Two fifty? And go with that rate study and then we're.
That's what I would say.
It'll be two fifty and then another one is gonna be a roughly, well, depending.
For the garbage, for a ten?
Or what?
Or just sewer? We need a motion for the sewer to be raised two dollars and fifty cents per.
Is that enough, is my question? I was saying.
Well, I think it, or sewers, I mean, I still think that. It puts us back to the state average. I don't know if he does nationally, I know he does state, but as far as state average, at least for. For a ratio of debt to income, I guess, is what it.
Right. As a whole, I think, is we're getting there, that's everything we need to raise.
Okay, I move to raise the sewer to two, two dollars and fifty cents more.
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Should we raise roughly?
Yeah. Average, you know, depending on the water. Mine's about ten dollars.
Now, the next one will be garbage, we're done?
Yeah. I don't even know what to be getting there, cause we don't have it on there. We're still coming out okay on there, but.
I'm saying if we're ten dollars, then every other community in around fifteen to twenty.
You know, should we just go two and a half now and see what time?
Look at how much money we've thrown at that garbage truck when it last.
You know, we could go two and a half now and then just. Review it in six months or a year.
Well, I understand what you're thinking, but in my mind, that truck is failing. I'd rather go right, five dollars right off the bat, prepare for this failure, this truck in the next year, two years. Start these kinds of events.
Well, this, not going against you, and just so we keep in mind, we also have to infrastructure for all the city property that's being assessed for the street project. We gotta make sure we cover that, or we're not gonna make our payments.
But I thought too, okay.
And that's different than this, just so you're aware. And that's also, but that's covering all the other stuff aside.
Cause we're taking, so right now we're at five dollars for the garbage, so we're at ten dollars.
Right, ten right now.
We're at ten right now. And that gives us, cause we were thinking a thirty dollar infrastructure fee at one time, so.
For everything, right?
Right, so that gives us twenty dollars towards the city streets, if we can figure out what particular area with that.
Split the difference, say four? On the garbage?
How much?
Four bucks.
We can do that.
We'd still be at the bottom end of our community and the surrounding communities at fourteen dollar garbage. That sounds good.
Dave Jameson hasn't approached us about raising any more speeds. As far as dumping there?
Everything's going up, I mean, it's just, you gotta do it. Maybe it comes a time we can order here, so.
And that's why we lowered that infrastructure at five bucks, cause that was promised when they were doing all the sewer. And at that time, we could, it sucks. I know we should've kept it.
Well, I'm sorry, we decided we should've looked at it, but I mean, it's time. It's time, it's been ten years.
So four dollars motion on that for?
I'll, I'll move.
Make a motion?
I make a motion.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So rate that puts us on an average household with water use nine fifty, ten bucks right now, we're at that, guys? Total.
Now we just gotta figure out what we gotta do for this infrastructure fee, but we'll find, we'll talk a little more about that.
Did you see on there what our taxes are, our, our street taxes? I paid them this time. For this year, it's on the, oh.
This is the city's portion?
Yeah.
City's land?
Yeah.
Of course, yeah, that's right.
Um, it's in the, it's in the, it's in your bills, or the bills that paid, I paid it in February.
Forty-three thousand?
What was it?
Thirty-three thousand?
Does that what it says, street?
Yeah.
Forty-eight.
Wait a minute.
That's your share funds.
Four thousand, I think.
Forty thousand here.
I just paid for the year, I did not pay them off, because you guys didn't come up with anything with this.
That this one, that's it.
Well, you know, this is what came in, assessment share funds, you know, share funds. So if you'll look for. Taxes, what's the taxes? Yeah, there you go, city taxes. That, I just paid for the year because y'all didn't get me to go ahead for anything else.
Oh, gee.
So this, I'm sorry, I was looking at something. This is what we pay him, the city's portion? Is that what you said? That thirty-three thousand?
No, that's what we got from residents. It'll say city, look on the side, it'll say city taxes. It's towards the bottom.
Forty-eight hundred.
Forty-eight hundred.
That's the city's portion for the whole year. Sorry.
Yep, we paid him off for the whole year.
And how many? How many people are on? How many guys, how many people are paying on this?
Very good. Very good. If you ever wanna look, it's right up. I keep it right up there. And then if you look here, and I even went so far as to, if it's all the way across, it means they're paid off. If they're just highlighted here, it means they paid for the year.
We don't care about who paid off, cause they've still gotta do this share.
Right.
Total number of people.
Just just numbers of people that's paid so far in this year's tax.
Oh, okay.
Or have to be. Cause I know they paid their share up. This is the city's share. And I don't know why we couldn't put this in with the original.
So?
Not assessing into the city assess it as everyone that's paying.
I don't think you'll ever see that though, because it goes through years in the rags before you'll see that number. You know what I'm saying?
If somebody doesn't pay their taxes?
Do you have the yearly? Yearly statements on what we could pay?
Understand, it's all across the country.
But how many people were assessed?
How many people were assessed is what you're gonna?
How many people actually paid the tax assessment? I don't know if you can.
In full?
No, just in a monthly or in a yearly deal.
Well, we got.
Well, you won't know until next year when the equalization comes out. Then she would have a list of who's delinquent.
But I didn't ask for like a total number of people that were assessed, don't you?
Years, years just going off like this water hookups, big two hundred and.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Two hundred and sixteen, something like that. So it's gonna be like twenty, two dollars.
But there's. Okay, that's what the two hundred and thirty. But there's people that were assessed that don't.
Yep, so I actually had the number up, so I can push it to twenty.
Still at twenty though, huh? Well, so that four thousand dollar, that's the city's share?
Yeah, that's. It's like just how many residents we have, basically water meter hookups and then people that were assessed that aren't. Don't have a water meter. I just figured two hundred and sixty people. Getting the assessment. It's just all worked.
Cause this is.
It was at least that after we, when I counted all those open lots.
We have a lot and then there will be tens, we minus the one we gave back to.
Cause even if people didn't have water in sewer hookup, they still gotta be assessed. A monthly payment though for.
Yeah.
A yearly.
For water, isn't that the deal?
We talked about that.
I thought it was gonna be ten bucks. We approved that one, I thought. Even if you don't have water in sewer, you're still getting ten bucks a month, right? Or something like that.
No, I don't think we ever did it.
No, we did not. I brought that up one time.
Cause that would help this number go down right now.
I I brought that up with Cleveland. They charge you twenty-five dollars a lot that you have with no water. As long as you're able to have that on that lot. They charge twenty-five dollars. That's what that.
That's where we were talking at one time, where we needed to get some money back from that, because at this point, we had no income coming off of that.
Yeah, see, they, Cleveland charges twenty-five dollars a lot.
If we split it in half, like I like that ten dollars. We should be the same.
Cause she said they were in trouble and then once they started doing that, because people hang on to lots for.
Monthly fee.
You know, just even if you don't have to pay.
If it's able to have water sewer garbage hookups. Just cause they don't, we can't take that. When you're not paying for it. We need to get some.
Would you have to do a city ordinance with that?
So we just figured with two hundred and sixty people, need at least twenty dollars to cover the city's share of their assessment right now. Whether that's higher or lower, we're just guessing at that.
Yeah, I just think about where I guess. Twenty dollars.
And that's breaking.
Per household, just to cover the city side.
That's what I'm saying, we gotta be careful with that water in sewer. But that puts us right at the thirty like we've discussed.
But that wouldn't, that wouldn't get your other people.
It's right at thirty.
If we took it up to twenty. But there's no rule that says we have to keep these numbers exactly.
That is to get us from the red to the black, or even basically. For all three of these accounts.
So how do we go about getting that done? We just make a motion to get that done as well?
I'll check on the readings and everything else, but at least we have that going now. I thought we already had this going, but I forgot, we kept waiting for that.
Yeah, let's.
Cause we didn't wanna raise it a bunch like you didn't have to.
But we're gonna. Stay with this.
That'll get us to the thirty dollars on increase of we were thinking would get us out of that.
Yep.
So we're not losing money.
Right, and then.
And that's.
Then we gotta be a little vigilant on taking, moving forward. Somebody wanna make that? I'll make that motion, twenty dollars, infrastructure fee increase. Does that have to be designated to a certain spot?
I believe that infrastructure pays, cause that's what it is, it's for the street project.
Just that project, right?
Yeah.
Well, we're allowed to take for the street project out of the infrastructure.
Oh, my, that's right, that's right.
So we're doing twenty right away? We're not doing ten to the lots? We just did the ten.
Okay.
And now we're doing the big one for the, for the city streets.
So we're, we're making lots, what do we say?
Oh, I see what you're saying. You know, we're assessing all these lots that have water hookups and sewer hookups or not. But they're able to have water and they don't, they're not running water. We're saying we're charging them. You know, ten or, she said twenty-five in Cleveland. That's, then we shouldn't have to get the infrastructure all the way to twenty if we're doing that, right? That's what we said. If we're charging lots.
It's not gonna be much less. I mean, we could save fifteen for now, but I'm not saying we have a hundred of those lots either. That's gonna make a dip, you know?
And I think we gotta be a little careful, because. Are we gonna do per lot? And really, a twenty-five foot lot is kind of worthless. So maybe if it's twenty-five feet or less, we shouldn't even.
So wouldn't it be just easier just to go as an infrastructure fee and then cover that with the infrastructure fee? Saying that's what. People was glad to pay infrastructure fee if they're not getting water? Yeah, that's the plan, wasn't it?
It's kinda the point, yeah. That way everyone gets assessed.
Has it covered there?
Well, what you're saying is basically a property owner then.
Yeah, and they just make it easy to set this.
Yeah, the infrastructure fee.
Just set the.
Irregardless.
Yep. Straight off thirty dollar infra, or twenty dollar infrastructure fee to cover. That issue as well. No?
And whether it's two lots or eight lots.
They're still getting an infrastructure. That's already said, right? All the assessment committee and everything, got all that or no? Well, I assume it doesn't matter on the lots yet. You should, isn't, isn't it gonna be? Assess this property, I think.
I'm confused.
I'm sorry, I jumped over that. I didn't mean to.
I don't get how, you know.
As a property owner paying for their property, you're recovering that, is what you're going with it, rather than infrastructure?
Well, we're just trying to bring these people in that don't have water, sewer, garbage, but have property in town.
Well, that's what.
That's what. Bring in witnesses. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
But I don't agree with if that one person owns six lots, they should have six infrastructure fees. That are just sitting there. That, it should be who's billed out, I would think.
But.
So Lauren, if you have three lots, you shouldn't build three different, lot, you should be Lauren's.
Just covering about one time. You're not per lot. You only have one infrastructure fee.
That's what you were saying, cause I just think, for instance, there's six lots that are attached over there, we don't charge her six. Infrastructure fees every month.
No.
Just think it's per person.
Per person.
Right?
But per owner?
I don't know if that's right either, cause I guess that's what I'm kinda looking at is, you know, like. That one owner here right north of your house, there's eight lots, two hundred feet. And granted, she's paying eighty-three dollars front foot for specials. But there's, I think, about three curb stops involved, or maybe four. So what I'm getting at is, you know, if you, less than twenty-five feet, you hardly can't put nothing on it. If you go like four lots or less. It would be from two to four would be twenty dollars. And. And then, so she'd be paying two, cause she's got eight lots there.
I see.
Because that way, they have no reason to do anything with it, but they never did have. Prior to the special assessment, cause I'm afraid those are coming back.
If it was sold, then she, somebody could do something with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
They would encourage them to move on it. Or like the house we tore down across from your place, that's a hundred feet, I think. He had no reason, cause his taxes were thirty-one dollars.
Yeah.
He had no reason to do anything with it, but if he's paying, now with the specials, I could change the two.
Alright. So instead of, instead of a twenty dollars, should it be, why don't we do a per lot fee of two dollars? Can you do that? Or or a dollar a lot. I don't know how it works out, but I'm just saying, so then if people do have twelve lots, you know, it's gonna cost them twenty-four dollars. With people that have two, it's gonna cost them four dollars. You know, rather than saying, okay, if it's four or more, two or more, six or seven, you know, it's just me, I'll let you try to figure out. And in my mind, fair.
And these are for the people that just have property here but don't have.
That's everything, not infrastructure for everybody, right?
But if we do, we're gonna get close to what we need for that four grand a year?
How many lots are down?
Two forty-two.
Of course, then that makes it.
Oh, lots? No, I don't know.
There's so many split lots. Like I'm thinking, like the old theater, that one twenty-five foot lot, he had one foot. Of the lot to the north and one foot of the lot to the south.
By risers, that's all fucked up from the railroad tracks. That's intertwined and enmeshed over there too.
That makes it tough too.
Give you an alley. The garage is on someone else's property.
So. But like on your real estate tax, doesn't it show you an exact number with your fraction and everything, how many lots?
I think so.
So if you're real estate, if you're going off the real estate, you should go see if somebody has two point three seven lots, cause that's what it's. I know that's what mine is. What number would that, how much would we need to get to the number eight?
Well, why don't we do this then, guys? Why don't we table that till next meeting, so I can get some more information from you? You know, I bet you more would be able to tell us how many lots we got in the heart.
I mean, and then we just get an exact number per lot and then it's, it's fair split across everybody and then.
Cause if we don't have to go twenty, that's great.
Oh, a hundred percent.
But I don't want anything else. I'll charge twenty and then look foolish next year. We gotta raise it five or lower.
That's right. Maybe it doesn't have to be.
Yeah, I'll get.
I'll move the table.
So we keep the water, sewer and garbage, that's done, right?
Yeah, that one's done, yeah. And I gotta check if we're getting.
Does it go on the next billing or do we have to do readings first?
I'm gonna check into that.
Okay.
I sometimes think we don't have to.
I didn't think so on this here one.
And I think it's in the, it's in the ordinance, okay, I think.
Cause we are legally able to set these. Oh, we got that reading. Alright, yeah, I'll table that, so we can get some more information. We could sit here till all night, so. Anyone, everyone have a chance to look at the bills? From last month? Any questions on them?
Oh, Troy Nelson.
Yeah.
Did he, that bill, was that from Main Street?
Um, I don't know. I'd have to look. It's, he just had it for just for doing. No, no going around doing whatever he does. He just gave me a snowboard.
Cause weren't we gonna take Main Street, divide it by footage? And then build the individual.
Should I get a copy of that for you guys?
Why don't you?
Okay.
We could help you with it as far as the footage is.
We should have it right on our table here, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, that's, they should have the footage is on our maps.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, they do.
You got it up on.
Yeah, I think they have.
The wife's got mine, but that was the agreement, wasn't it?
Yeah.
That's what we had talked about.
It's not gonna be on this one, but somewhere, I know it's broke down.
And then she could go out to the, send them a bill, I guess.
Right. And if they don't pay it, then like the old hardware store, if he don't pay it, then we just turn it into, and it goes on his taxes.
Okay.
And Troy, in my personal opinion, Troy's doing a damn good job. He's got this mess of snow.
And he's up before anyone gets going. I like that. I think he's doing a good job. Not that it wasn't different before, but I'm just saying it's.
Yeah.
I have one question to revert back. That twenty-five thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars for the water, that's what we lost last year?
No, we paid, no, we, we paid two thousand nine hundred to sue it and one, and sixty dollars and sixty-seven cent each month. We pay them that. For water, and you'll see that, that's what we contract. When we go over, we always have an overage bill. Last year and the year before, it ran anywhere from twelve thousand to fifteen thousand overage. This year it jumped to twenty-five, that's why it broke.
That's what I'm saying, we, we haven't built out that much though? We lost?
No. That's why, that's why we were discussing that ice ring. If you look there where the, it shows you where the most water was lost. If you flip it here, it'll give you a table. Right here's where most of our water, and that's when we were having problems with the. Torbex thing broke. And that's when we were watering lawns for, you know, for the park, and that's when we were doing ice rings. So that's where the most of our water disappeared.
But I'm not, I'm just, what I'm saying, we weren't red twenty-five thousand dollars, were we? Like what we've collected and what we paid off?
We didn't get to collect, well, some of it, yeah. Probably, probably about, we're, we're, from what it looks like from last year, this year, there's about ten thousand dollars on the counter for. Cause it usually runs anywhere from twelve to fifteen thousand dollars in the last couple of years I've been here.
I'll just move on, sorry. Um, any more questions on the bill? So I'll take a motion to approve them?
Wait a minute, who was?
Taylor, Lauren second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Alright. David, tell them next meeting.
Can, can you go up a little bit at spring workshop?
You said you didn't have anything.
Oh, I, it's right here.
I don't, what are you doing?
Do I need a motion for you to go to the workshop?
No.
No, cool, I'm going then.
You gotta stay, because that's what I said.
Oh, and then, well, what I do is, the lady from Streeter, we both go. And her town pays for one night and our town pays for one night, and we just bunk together.
Okay.
Well, then there was one here with, I should have brought this one up, with late payment list. Now, if you'll see where I put, there's some still owed. I sent them disconnect notices. Both blacks paid theirs in full. Ryan Sturbeck and Missy Beer did not. They're short about one month's worth. I did not cut it off, being it's in the middle of winter, and they did pay two. They're still owed. So what is owed there would be for last month and March, this tenth coming up, so I didn't disconnect.
Well, they look really good. Well, they look really good, so.
Thank you.
Monday, April fourth, seven P M. Are we still, yeah, we still stay with seven, although we won't be. Okay. Okay.
Who's your?
Second?
Second.
Two.
Aye. April fourth. Time is it? Eight twenty-seven?